It is eight o'clock, so I would call this meeting of the Willoughby County Council to order. Let's stand. We invite you to share with us as we leave.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, indivisible, indivisible, and just as for all.
Jeff Rensler, you are first on our agenda.
Thank you. Thank you for making me first. Three trials starting in fifteen minutes.
So you'll only speak for fourteen?
I'll only be here for an hour. Thank you. I'm here today to request an adjustment in classification for one of my employees, Brooke Lemon, for the administrative position. We've been assigning her some more responsibility. She's taking much more responsibility in an assisting 4D reporter type role. And we noticed that that's not really commensurate with the job description or her classification. So we asked that to be reassigned. It's not a big jump, but it's a jump to put her in line with people on the third floor of the court office. We're doing that same type of work. And the good news for all of us is that this is a position, her position is one that's covered by the 4D government reimbursement. So two-thirds of her salary and two-thirds of any salary adjustment will be covered by that federal reimbursement. So it's not nearly as impactful on the pocketbook as it might otherwise seem. Happy to answer questions.
I assume you've talked with the prosecutor about it and being that it's 4D money that he's good with that?
Yeah, it doesn't really affect, I mean, the grant comes in for some prosecutor-related positions. And this is the one position we have upstairs that's related. So I'm not sure it affects.
So it's not, the 4D part of it's not out of his budget?
No, no, it's two-thirds of whatever we spend on 4D-related activities reimbursed. So the fact that we're increasing this salary doesn't take away from anything he's doing.
The personnel committee did send this to WIS, and we are giving it a favorable pass. Jennifer, is there anything you would like to add? Do I have a motion to change this classification?
Make a motion, absolutely. Classification request for a second course.
Second. Second. Have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? There are none. I'll call for the vote. All in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. And let the record show it is unanimous. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you very much.
Janelle Schmidt and just you, okay.
Morning.
Morning.
I am coming back for new radio consoles for dispatch. I was here in, I believe, March. I had to give a new quote because the one that I had was from October. And that was, the March meeting was the last one they would allow me to use that one because the price of everything everywhere is very low. So I have a new quote that I sent you. I'm so willing to input 200,000 out of manual 145. I came to the commissioners and went over everything again, just as a refresher. And so I will do that again with you guys. It is a Motorola radio system. They schedule system upgrades every three, at year three, five, and nine. Our current system gets updates as needed. The software update is every year, but the system as a whole is updated when it's needed. All 92 counties use the Ipsic radio system, which is the 800 system. Twenty-eight counties in Indiana use a Motorola 7500 that we are requesting. Our current radio system, there's only four in Indiana, 380 worldwide. So this Motorola is used in a lot of counties. There's 24/7 monitoring right now. We only have during business hours. And after hours, we know there's a problem and it doesn't work. So then we have to call them in. I looked back this year. Our radio has been worked on. They've been called in 19 times this year. I can go back further if you request, but at least this year it's been 19 times. Motorola has a tech that lives in our county. They don't necessarily have to come and work on our radio on, and they can do a lot of repairs remotely. But if they do need to come in, one lives in the county. It connects directly to the state. It's a wired line console. Right now, we have a wireless console. So when we talk, it's using radios in the back that look like a quadro radio. Would you agree with that? When we talk, that it busies out the system. So if somebody, if one of the guys pushes their panic button, we cannot get that if we're talking on the radio. It'll go to Huntington, it'll go to the city. And they call us occasionally saying, hey, one of your guys pushed their panic button. Is everybody okay? We didn't get it because we're on the radio. That's a huge, huge officer safety issue.
How often does that happen?
It doesn't happen a lot, but if you push your panic button, you need somebody right now. It doesn't happen a lot, but that's good. We don't want it to happen at all. We would have priority as a wired line console. So if we needed to broadcast something that was urgent, we could talk over our guys so that they could hear us. We can create, like I said, a super group. So if an officer is in a pursuit and is going to another county, we can hook us all together. He does nothing in the car. He can pay attention to what he should be paying attention to. And we can all connect and get together. Less RF interference with the wired line console. So right now, weather is a big factor in our radio system. If it's foggy, it messes us up. If it snows a lot, it messes us up. If it rains hard, it messes us up. This would be eliminated because it connects directly to the state. I like to say you can't ever eliminate all risk, but we should at least improve the circumstances and reduce it, and these radios would. Do any questions?
I guess my first question would be, what in circumstances has changed since the last time you brought this? What's?
Price changed. Can I speak to that, Mr. Chairman? So last month, we talked about, obviously, combining dispatch was discussed. I brought it up specifically with my colleagues to gauge their support. I didn't have any support, so it was only me. So obviously, I can't do anything as one commissioner. So now, I do understand they absolutely need this. Officer safety isn't something that I'm willing to compromise on. They need it now. I know that the new jail's coming, but they need it now, and I know that they can move it.
Yes, they can.
So what we're planning to do is come up with our ARPA plan with the funds. And that is something that we would like to pay for that with. So with combining dispatch being off the table now, that's the biggest thing that's changed. So they need it.
Did the commissioners take any action as far as a favorable pass?
Yes, it was unanimous.
Okay.
The balance of $326,000 is going to come out of our different ARP fund.
What's the current age of the system you're using now?
Is there any service contract left on it?
There is. Three years, and we were going to talk to the attorney about that. Like I said, we can't drop a service contract. They've been in 19 times this year. We'd be broke paying for that. But we're going to talk to the attorney and see what we can do about that.
Well, you had said also on the service that it's the new, the guy that lives here in Whitley County that would service the new console is 24/7, I believe?
Motorola monitors it 24/7, the system. So they'll know that there's a problem before we do. And most times, they can fix it remotely. They don't have to have a tech. But if they do, it's not like the guys coming from Chicago where they're based.
Well, I guess where my mind went was when they signed that service contract, it was 24/7. They're not coming 24/7 now? You said they only come during hours, and that contract was supposed to be for 24/7.
It is if we call them. What I'm saying is, our system will be monitored by Motorola 24 hours a day, 7 days a week. Right now, it's only monitored during business hours. So.
By you?
And J and K.
Okay.
So after hours, we know we have a problem when it doesn't work and we need it. Paging out fire departments. We tried to dispatch Smith Township to a house fire. The tones didn't work. They were alerted because most of them have active 911. So when we put a call into our CAD system, it sends them like a text message alert to their phone. And this was in the middle of the night. One of the firemen happened to be awake. So he got the alert. He drove to the station. Meantime, we're trying to get city to dispatch or set their tones, and we're trying to get Noble County because they also have that ability. And he went to the station and got a fire truck and drove through town, running lights and sirens to wake up other firemen to get to the possible house fire.
That's not good, but I guess my question hasn't been answered. When they signed the contract with your current service provider, it was for 24/7 service. I'm not understanding why they're not coming 24/7.
They will come if we call them.
But why don't you call them if there's a problem?
We do call them. What this will eliminate is, they will know we have a problem before we know we have a problem. And now, you know we have a problem when it's actually a problem and we can't use it.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
Question. This system evidently has some flaws to it or some. I'm a little concerned because Warsaw just put in the system just like this. So if our system's so bad, why would Warsaw go to?
And Grant County and Delaware County. The other thing is, after the last meeting, I went and talked to the sheriff right after the meeting, and I talked to Jason, going to be our new sheriff. He said we did not need to change councils at this time. I believe he told Tim that also, that it wasn't an emergency.
Well, that's news to me.
And then, the system you're looking at is what model number? Okay, I understand that Motorola is coming out with a new model number. And we're going to miss that model number in our new jail.
They will upgrade. They upgrade them every three, five, and seven years.
But if you're going, if you're changing models, isn't that a new purchase?
No, they upgrade it. That's part of it.
For this $326,000, after your 200,000's out, you're saying every three years are going to come in? At no expense. For how long? I mean, how many years do they do that? It's not forever.
Three, five, and nine years.
Okay, so we'll go up to nine years, okay.
How long have we been supposedly having problems with service? Like eight months, nine months? I guess what I'm getting to, there's $749,000 here. If we were having that much problem nine months ago, why wasn't it in our budget?
Why would they purchase that in a budget? We've been having problems since it was put in.
Well, then, why are we coming now and wanting $749,000? Why didn't we have in our budget last June? If we were thinking about?
I have 200,000. I don't have 500,000. I think some odd thousand in my budget. I don't have that money. I also, and George can attest to this, I was asked to put a five-year plan in place, and I did. This was part of it five years ago.
Okay.
I'm hung up on why it's been, you just said it hasn't ever worked properly. And we paid for the system. We paid for the service. We paid for the maintenance, and it hasn't been done. So I want to know, why didn't they come in and fix it? I think we need to find this out.
This system was put in before.
Because we paid for that.
It was put in before March. We never found a contract for it signed anywhere. And believe me, I have looked everywhere. I don't know what the terms of the contract were.
They couldn't provide one? Did you ask for one?
Yes, I did.
That is odd.
We have a contract now, don't we?
She's talking about purchase.
Yeah, the purchase one. I've looked everywhere.
We need to see if we can find that.
I guess I'm still kind of hung up. If we got a service contract with them, why they're not coming in, if they're not, if somebody's not relaying the message that you're having trouble, it sounds to me like there's a communication lapse there.
They are coming in. They are coming in when we have a problem. But we know we have a problem when it's a problem. So we're not getting monitored after hours to say, hey, you have a problem. Let's fix it before you actually need that piece of equipment. They're coming in when we have a problem. But if your house is on fire and we can't tone fire to help mitigate the dangers, that's a problem. And they can't get there in two minutes to get it fixed.
So you're basically saying that the new one, if we go with the new system, won't have them glitches or anything?
It'll, no. It'll be monitored 24 hours a day by Motorola. So they will know we have a problem before we do.
So the company we're with right now is not monitoring it?
Is there a monthly service fee or could it be hooked up for that sort of 24?
For Motorola, it's annually. The first year, yeah.
Is it included in this warranty service? There's no other additional charges other than this?
Let me ask a question from a different perspective. If there was not ARP money available, what would, how would this be addressed?
I, well, with this being such an issue, and again, I cannot compromise on our officer's safety, I would recommend that we would take it out of seat at.
Okay, but you say the officer's safety is an issue right now. If it's an issue right now, it needs to be dealt with right now. Therefore, we need to find out what is going on and why it's occurring and get it repaired.
Well, I think that we've been trying to do that.
Because it takes what, 10 months?
And saying it's fixed, and it keeps breaking. It just keeps breaking and breaking and breaking. That's the problem.
And there's nothing, right now, it's a wireless council. There's nothing that can be done to fix that. That is what we have. And we use our radio like anybody else, like the officers using their handheld radio or their car radio. And it busies it out. So when it's busy, then we can't get our emergency button if they're pushed. So there's not anything that can be fixed per se because that's how the system is.
I guess, Janelle, the biggest question I still have is why the sheriff and Mark and Jason would tell?
I don't think the sheriff did.
Sheriff didn't, but it was.
Oh, I thought you said sheriff.
No, Jason. I talked to sheriff that when I were to Jason's office. And in our conversation, he said, we do not have to replace the consoles at this time.
Mr. Chairman, can I speak?
Just to say.
I've never heard that.
Okay. Well, I think there's a lot of questions that have to be answered. I don't think that's the only one. Okay, let's defer right now to.
I haven't heard that either from the sheriff or Mr. Spencer. And I can only go by the information that's provided to me. I was down in dispatch. I'm no expert on it. I'm not. So I have to rely on the people that are, and I do know that it's a problem. So I don't know. I feel like there's a lot of sidebar conversations. And then one person's telling someone this, and then another person's saying this, and then one person interprets it this way. So I don't know if we all need to get in the same room, but that's not anything that I've heard. So I'm just going by.
I would suggest, if I may, that that's a good idea. The commissioners are responsible for dispatch. And I would say rather than sidebar, I think council members have tried to investigate to understand better.
Sure.
And not to in any way diminish the work that you've done, Janelle. I think we need some other heads in here so that we all understand each other in the first place.
Can't we bring in J and K to explain what's going on with them?
I think we need to do a field trip over with her and have it all explained so we have the visual and we see exactly what is occurring, exactly what she can't work with. I think that would be the best way because it is important and it is confusing. And there are a lot of questions. And until we're with her, I don't think we're going to fully understand.
I think that we should probably do that sooner rather than later.
Sure.
What's the lead time for ordering these radios? What's it at now?
About 10 months.
And what is the?
They can get, she's assured me they can get all of the components even with the supply chain problems. Because you know, that's happening everywhere.
What is the lead time for the, when is the break dirt for the jail? Has that been decided yet about rough?
Right now, we're waiting on the request for proposal. Actually, Mr. Bai, I'm sorry, did you, is that ready?
Yes, so.
He's from Elevatus. I'm sorry. He is with the company that's helping us design it. Okay, thank you.
Is it encompassed in the financial part of this plan for this equipment? As you would see, this would be extras. This would be like furniture? To the effect that budget or that money that we're looking at to build the new jail in any way whatsoever? I know you've built several jails and have been involved with that. What is your experience in the past on that transition? Not just new equipment, but any equipment that's at the jail, it would go to the new jail as far as the timeliness, how it's set up, the construction timeframe, and not to have loss of service. Is that possible?
Yeah, it's difficult. And she probably, I know better than I do. You're dealing with emergency services and detention facilities. You can't have an housing cover to move, right? You can't, you can't put a message on a natural machine that says, pardon our interruption service. So you have to have an operational system prior to shutting down your existing one for the move, right? Really don't have the logistics of that anyway.
They told me they would set up a console and have it functioning one so that we would use service while they do another.
Thanks.
Do you know what? And is one enough?
That will get us, we get another one moved over.
How long does it take to move? With the move time, is it an afternoon or is it two weeks? I don't have any.
Yeah.
I know you've worked in dispatch quite a few years. My question to you is, why don't we go simple? Dispatch?
We do different things in our dispatch center. And right now, we have a backup. If ours goes down or something happens to us, then the city, there are backup. It's a totally different building. And if we move out to the new jail, we will be farther apart. So the likelihood of a natural disaster hitting both of us is not great. We'll each have a backup center somewhere to forward our calls to, forward our stuff until we can get up and running again.
I'd like to ask a question of the commissioners. This is a very large chunk of the ARP funds. Apparently, it seems like you guys have a plan for where you think the money should be spent to spend this much upfront. Are you at a position to share that plan with us today, or are you still finalizing it?
We're still finalizing it. I mean, I could give you a brief overview.
No, I don't. I think that answers the question.
Couple of quick questions. Looking through this, there's 20-some pages. Has our county attorney had the opportunity to look through this contract?
I don't believe that he has because nothing's been approved. So I guess I wouldn't see the point in sending a huge contract over and paying him to do that if there's no support for it.
If and when we make a decision whether to fund this project or not, does it include the installation into the new jail with this contract?
No. So it isn't.
That would be an additional expense.
Sure.
So if we buy this equipment now and put it in our jail, then we're going to have to pay an additional amount to have it taken to the new jail? And it's going to take 10 months to get it? What would be an estimated time to where you would, with the building of the jail, when you would expect the equipment to be going in out there?
Jail is scheduled to complete roughly December of '23. So.
So. So we're talking 18 months, and we know it's going to take 10 months to get the equipment. So we're talking about a six-month span.
I think we've had significant discussion unless anyone has a pertinent question.
I have a few more questions. Why don't we have, I'm from the corporate world. So that's how I, why don't we have three quotes like normally? I would have to get, I was presenting. I mean, it's just standard. I just wondered that. I mean, why don't we? I mean, why don't we? Did you check others? Did you price other people? I think that needs to be done.
Do we have to because of the amount?
I can ask the attorney. I don't know the answer to that question.
So I think just that question alone means it would not be appropriate for us to take a vote today? Do I have a motion to table this until our next meeting?
I think we need to get together with Janelle and go over everything. I think we need to plan that out. Is it going to be all of us? Are we going to pick three people? How are we going to do this?
My opinion is that each of us should be there, but it should be no more than three at a time because then it becomes a public meeting in the basement of the sheriff's.
Can it become a public meeting at the 911?
It's informational. We can have a forum there.
It's just informational?
Yes.
Are you in agreement? I guess we should have this.
I think.
When I sent it in March, I invited everybody over.
I tried to, I didn't get my information until, other than on my phone, which is too slow. But I didn't get this till Monday. I did call, but you were out for training.
I think another thing that we need to keep in mind in our expediency in this issue too is that essentially, we're working with a six-month timeframe. So we have to, by the time we get this back to us again, now we're at five months. So we're going to have, we really need to weigh. And if you could provide this information to Janelle on what that additional cost is going to be to put it in and then move it over four or five, or start at six, could be down to three months by the time we even make that decision. So that, I think, is very good information that we'll need to take into consideration, please. Well, yeah, because we're talking like a six-month window is what we're working with right now. So if this lasts for six months, it would make absolutely no sense for us to make a decision. If we get a decision made next month, we've got five months that we're going to put it in the old facility before we would move it to the new facility. We need to evaluate what that cost is going to be on doing that.
Makes common sense to install it in a new facility and not where we're at now.
Unless the safety factor there is overwhelmingly.
Well, and that brings up another issue. It's 10 months to get the new radios if we approved it. We've got 10 months of, they're saying that the officers' lives are at stake. We need to find out why and how that can be taken care of. And if it's taken care of, then we could wait that additional six months.
If we're going to have a meeting, I think J and K should be there to explain what's going on, to help explain.
I agree.
Teresa, you want to speak?
Sure. So we've had a lot of meetings with J and K. I've been part of all of them. Obviously, this is only my second year in office. And again, they say it's fixed and it breaks again. They say it's fixed and it breaks again. So I guess all of your concerns are very, very valid. Again, though, knowing that we're not. Again, though, knowing that we're not going to a central dispatch and knowing that our officers' lives are in danger. Again, it doesn't happen often, but if they push that and something happened to one of them and I, again, it's under the commissioners and something happened to one of them, I couldn't live with myself if I voted no. So I have to look at, at it from that perspective. It only takes one time. So I don't know. But again, all of your, your concerns are very valid. I do think that we should all get together with Janelle and get all of our questions answered. And it seems like everyone here has a lot of questions, but. So that's, that's where I'm coming from. I just want them to be as safe as possible and I, you know, or get there. She's trying to tone out because there's a fire and somebody, one of my, our citizens died because no one got there in time and it could have been prevented. Well, that's horrible. I mean, we have the money fortunately, so that's, that's where I'm coming from.
Janelle, do you have a log of those 19 times and what it was for? Okay, cause, cause part of the problem I have is that I did some additional investigation and, and I, I'm, and, and the visit will, will break this down and, and J and K is there, it'll break it down. But my question is, is it a equipment malfunction? Is it a software malfunction? Is it a dispatcher malfunction on that 19 times? Did, if J and K got called and they came there, was it the system or did we not use the system right? And that's what I have to partly sort, sort out. Cause I'm hearing that part of it is maybe the dispatchers didn't push the right button or, or the software system, which is not J and K, that's a, a software system on its own, correct? I mean.
I don't have any access to it at all. I don't have access.
But I mean, our software system that council approved and, and you put in that you're using.
Not the software that operates the dispatch system, but the location software.
Our CAD, that's completely different from our radio system.
But, but I'm hearing a little bit that, that sometimes maybe they got there and it wasn't their system at all. It was that the system won't, that the software maybe wasn't being used right. So we, we need to sort that out too.
I guess I, I, can you explain that? Because our CAD system is completely separate from our radio system.
And, and what, that's what I'm saying is that sometimes maybe they got there and they said, oh, this button just wasn't pushed right. It's operator error instead of the system. They interface though, right? They were, you know, so, so that's. CAD and dispatch don't work together?
CAD and our radio system, no. Our CAD and our radio system.
Oh, okay.
I think that the council, if you will allow me, has come to consensus that we need to come and understand what happens in dispatch better. So unless I have a motion to approve this expenditure, we will, I would entertain a motion to table it until our next meeting. We already have the motion in the second and the discussion has continued. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion to table, please raise your right hand. Janelle, would you email us two possible dates so that we would have options on when we would come there? It might not be all seven of us at the same time and schedule J and K for one of those. So for those that that's particularly important to, could be at that meeting.
Is there room there for also?
I guess I'm confused, I've invited you and invited you and nobody is, I shouldn't say nobody. Tom King, he's the only one that's come over.
I think the rest of you need to see it and I think we need to have J and K there so they can, so we can really understand what's going on. That's my opinion. I think there's been some confusion on our part too on, you know, how big of a need that this really was. And some of the information you're sharing with us, Janelle, moves it to a different priority than what I've been led to believe. So especially with the new jail going in and we're looking at that right now, six month window, the difference window. So that's.
Yeah, I think all of us are quite concerned about officer safety. And if this is what needs to happen ultimately to address that delaying. George, would you like to speak? I think that's an excellent idea. Would you issue that invitation as well, Janelle?
Mark said he might have some. I, I don't, but Mark said that.
Yeah, I was thinking of that first motion and second, I might, I'll have to apologize for that.
Okay.
She gets a couple more quotes if she could get them.
Okay, and you will look for other possible quotes? And apparently we did not have a motion on the floor, that was the previous action. So do I have a motion to table?
I make a motion and I will table.
And do we have a second? All in favor of the motion to table, please raise your right hand and let it show it's unanimous. Janelle, we do appreciate your work. We just don't, clearly don't have the information if it feels necessary. Jason Meyer from Easter Seals. Morning.
Morning. If you're tapped today, I see everyone gathered or they're creating the package, so I have extra copies of it. And I have some additional flyers as well that I didn't find out if anyone's interested. I may have to test them. Additional programming services that I won't go through today to just so you have a clearer. So. Actually, they're all.
Oh, they're packed.
Yeah, yeah, they're packed. So just wanted to give you. So I wanted to thank the council against your support and the funds each year. So we use those for transportation for our fleet of vehicles at the Easter Seals passages, creative learning center. So we're right off of Oak Street there, where I actually do a part here at the site. And we have vehicles that we use for transportation to the farm homes. So we have three of those homes here in Little County that's about eight individuals in each house. We have 24 individuals in 11 less homes as well as 10 supported independent waiver homes. So those are anywhere from two to four people per home. So all of our services are provided to individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities. Some individuals with Down syndrome, autism, different disabilities. And then our day programs get creative learning centers for about 60 individuals each year. So we also have a program throughout the community at the Department of Whitley and the hospital. So we're working on employment readiness academies there, at the YMCA here in Little County. We work with their, in the team there, where we have some individuals do some volunteer work as well as employment opportunities. And then we work with local factories as well, so it also electronic to have individuals place employment. What I wanted to talk briefly about today is we merged with Easter Seals Art last March, so March of 2021. And with that, I highlighted some of the new programs and services we've been able to offer. When we did the merger last year, the two goals for the board of directors was to increase programs and services for the individuals we serve at Easter Seals passages. And I think those programs that we've listed have done that. I can walk through a few of those in a moment. And then increased pay for our direct support professionals that work with our individuals each day. So with the merger, our direct support professionals now make $16 an hour and $18 an hour on the weekend. When I started with the organization in 2013, we made $8.50 an hour. So that has obviously helped with some employment, obviously everywhere around this increase their employment, wages as well. So we're still battling with that. But the alignment or the merger with Easter Seals has helped with that. So I wanted to give you a few of the programs we're doing. If you ever want to drive by our creative learning center or take a tour of our learning center, I know for you've done that. Teresa, you've done that, I appreciate that. Anyone else who wants to do a tour of our creative learning center, we're happy to, to give those anytime. I have my card, I'll leave both folks as well. But we have a new garden that we're starting. It's a raised bed garden. We just put it in this last weekend, so I knew nothing about growing. Growing, it probably did, but so that's something that we've started with a grant and we partnered with the city to do okra grain as well. That was a partnership with the YMCA and the university library. So Eric and Mary partnered with us on that. So lots of cool things. I think one of the biggest things with our merger with Easter Seals is the employment programs that we can offer. So we have a staff person in Columbia City High School, her name's Kelsey Castle. She used to work with our day program. She's now at the high school, working with students with disabilities there on what life after school means, whether it's a two-year degree, four-year degree. Employment just really depends where each student is in the special services program. So Brady and the team out of the high school have been great to work with. We're meeting with Smith and Green in a couple of weeks as well. And then we are also working with Whitlock too. We're really trying to get employment out there as well as with our adults that are in these sealed passages. We have anywhere from 18 to, our oldest lady is 92 years old. So each person has different needs, some unemployment, some no. But those are a few things. Happy to answer any questions, but I did want to leave you those as well as my card. We partner with Whitley County Transit as well. So we utilize Whitley County Transit for some of our transportation as well as our fleet of vehicles and then our direct support professional vehicles too. So it's a, it's always a group of people that help with getting transportation to and from work to and from our programs and services. We're grateful for the county's continued support.
Jason, can you talk on the land up there on North Oak Street? Is there any plans for that? How immediate are they? What are we looking at?
Well, I could talk a little bit, so touch base a little with Nathan. So with the merger with Easter Seals, that was Passages and Whitley Crossings Neighborhood Corporation was a separate nonprofit, separate housing corporation that I was the CEO of both on. We merged Whitley Crossings with Brightpoint out of Fort Wayne. So can I, Brightpoint, same, same thing. So Steve Hoffman and Matt Crouch are the ones really doing that development now. I know that there's still plans to be doing it. And of that, we still have three homes for Easter Seals passages that are planned to be built there. Obviously, the grants that we had gotten, I can't speak to before the merger, but the grants that we had gotten and allocated for budgets at Kerner and the number and building prices at that time. So.
So the whole campus won't be Easter Sealed Passages houses?
No. So I believe last I talked to Matt, it was eight to 10 houses and of those three would be at Easter Sealed Passages. And there would be more of our smaller homes, our two, three or four person homes, nine or eight person.
So will the sale of those other lots help finance what you guys are doing with the three homes?
Uh, no, that, that, so it's all in the same grant. So what, the grant that we had applied for at the time was through Indiana Housing Community Development Authority and Federal Home Loan Bank of Indianapolis, both funds there. And with the IHCD, Indiana Housing Funds, there was a disability set aside. So a portion of those homes had to be set aside for individuals with disabilities. That was part of the grant score sheet. And so I just know those three homes that they'll be working with us on. But I do know that we also have that one acre closer to the Creative Learning Center. It's about 1.2 acres and that's where we have that little parking extension there. And then our raised garden beds went right next to that. So that's still, that'll be the in-between.
Well, I just, I've been excited to see that develop, so.
But I know, but I do know the collection remodel downtown has started to happen. And that was always ahead of schedule even prior to the merger. Just because we're working with the current architecture that originally rehabbed the building, so.
That should be done somewhere.
One question. When the merger was happening, we had, I had some concern about the clients and their access to service or disruption in their services. How are the clients doing? Is there more transportation to Fort Wayne or there, are there opportunities here in Columbia City?
There's both. So with, with the merger, that's a great question. There is onsite on the Fort Wayne, Fort Wayne office. So that's open two to three days a week. I think it's two right now and we're scaling that up. But there is an opportunity for our clients to be able to utilize mobile service there. So instead of being in ER, they can go up there instead. So that is an option. But most of the programs are still here. So at the Creative Learning Center, we still have our art, we still have all the different things we've been doing. We've just added additional ones as well. So as with any merger, obviously there were a few positions that didn't carry over and things to that nature. But our systems and our processes are a lot better. We are electronic with things. We can now do a lot more where we were paper and pencil before in terms of the back office.
Integration in the community is essential, that it be in the community. So thank you.
Community foundation and things and that sets up the progress.
You still work with schools?
We do, so yeah.
All of them in Whitley County?
Yeah, so Whitley County Consolidated, yes, we're working very closely. We have Dr. Brandon and then obviously high school with Brady has came out there with Waco. We're getting back in, we work really close with Brandon, who's superintendent over there, but we're starting to get back in there. And then we're working with Dan. A couple of weeks scheduled to be in school next year.
There are no other questions, thank you very much, Jason.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate your work. The next item on our agenda is entitled the ordinance, pledging general and other county funds to bond for the county jail construction. We have an ordinance to review. This is necessary in the process of the bonding. Commissioners have already passed what's necessary. It will be 202204. Do I have a motion? To approve and pass this ordinance, 202204. Essentially what it says is that we guarantee to pay the bonds even if it is, even if it's necessary to take general funds. We the taxpayers, yes, sir. Second, a motion and a second. Further discussion, questions? All in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand and let it show that it is unanimous. Nathan Bilger and then Scott will immediately follow.
Morning.
What we have before you and Jen and I, we're working on this together, is an additional preparation request for the part-time inspector's account. What happened was after the budget was proposed last year, and Jen can speak more to this. After the budget was approved last year, the salary for the part-time inspector was raised in order to make it parallel with full-time inspector. They're essentially the same. Where it was raised to the highest, there's our time position. That was not accounting for the budget, of course. So that is part of this request is to ask for digital preparation to account for that late increase. And then also we had expected that we could utilize the full-time building inspector more and the part-time daily inspector less based on last year's permits and our hours that we utilized them. Looks like this year we will need to use the part-time building inspector as much as we did last year. Our permit counts are basically running the same as last year, well, virtually the same. And last year was a residence network. So we had. So we had expected to cut the usage down to about sixty per month with the additional salary rate increase that cut it down to about four. Last year, we were averaging about eight. And so keeping that same number for this year, about eighty per month. It's where we'd be. And they requested seventy-six hundred dollars. This reflects above that. And then also reflects the fact that we haven't expended everything yet this year. So it's cumulative to the end of the year is what not cumulative, the seventy-six hundred would be on top of what's year-to-date remaining.
Anything to add, Jennifer? I would entertain a motion for an additional appropriation resolution from the general fund for building and planning for this additional.
I make a motion to approve the seventy-six hundred dollars.
Have a motion?
Second.
A second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Let us show it's unanimous.
Thank you.
Good morning. I'm back here this month from last month's meeting where we wish to go ahead and spend the money and then make the actual appropriation today. So just again, moving surplus out of twelve oh six fund into the actual budgeted line item for this year covers the expenditure of the historical blocks.
Is that started yet, Scott or no?
We sent them a check, so it should have been. It's going to be several months to get that done. All by hand, or there's no big machines or anything. They're all done by machine.
Then where are you going to keep that at?
We have a fireproof safe. All these ones are kept in. We have moved that to the new location and then started setting that.
There's a general question. Does that have the same level of humidity, humidity control that the?
Probably not. If you want to get into that, we're looking at lots of money.
Could it be stored in the recorder's office where they have tighter control of those issues?
Fireproof.
Not fireproof? Okay.
We would have to actually build a separate section and storage room that would actually control that. Can be done. They hold up fairly well. They're probably opened once a month or so that the, so they're getting the same humidity control.
Okay. All right. Do I have a motion for the additional appropriation from the local health trust for three thousand five hundred dollars?
No move.
Motion. Do I have a second? Motion and a second. Any further questions? Seeing none, all in favor of the resolution, please raise your right hand. Can you use the golden rod if you use it?
There is no hole. We have to drill the sage event.
It's a lot cheaper.
Most of the repairs we done to the books is expensive wear. Some of them are a hundred years old. Imagine people turning those pages for a hundred years. So that's what most of the learn from that stuff.
Thank you, Scott. Next on our agenda is landfill sale discussion. I assume this will be led by the commissioners.
George, do you want to speak to it?
If you'll come on up for the microphone, George, thank you.
George, I'm with the county commissioner. We have an individual that's interested in buying the old landfill out on five hundred. And so what we've been doing is we got ahold of IDAM. We got ahold of our attorneys to find out what it would take to sell the landfill. We have, it's, it's quite expensive for us to maintain, but we have to keep testing every quarter on that. Plus, we have insurance and we have to pay for that. We have to mow it. And so what we've done is I've got a list of the expenses that we've had for two thousand and nineteen. We actually put in sixteen thousand, sixty-eight dollars, twenty twenty, twenty-seven thousand dollars, two hundred and thirty-three, twenty-seven, two thirty-three. Twenty-one, we put in twenty-nine thousand dollars. And in twenty twenty-two so far, we put in fifteen thousand, five hundred dollars into that landfill. So I'm asking your approval to consider the sale of lands, landfill.
And we'll have no liability. We won't have to do any more testing. We'll have, our hands will be clean up.
Yeah, we'll have a whole harmless to it.
And we're going to make millions of dollars.
But at least we won't be spending all this money.
Is there any downfall to selling at all?
We've got the attorney involved in it. And I don't see that we've got, there is a downfall, downfall or downside to that because in fact, we're making sure that we've got all the legalities involved with it. But the individual that's buying it or that would like to buy it is very good about working with the county.
George, I know you've been involved with the landfill for quite a few years, but I can't give you my yes or no answer because I'd like to read the letter from the attorney to make sure all the i's that dotted and t's across because I know what we go through to test. We've got wells around there that's been tested. I know there's arsenic in that area. And I want to make sure we're covered before I vote yes.
Even the school gets tested.
Yes.
Yeah.
I mean, that's.
And then there's a procedure we have to go through because we're going to have to go through. We have to hire appraisers. We have to hire two appraisers. And it's strange. The code says that we have to hire two appraisers to get the appraisals. But we don't have to go by the appraisals. So but I'll make sure that all of you have the information on that.
Will IDAM give us a letter and certifying and indemnifying that we're no longer held responsible?
I can, I can check with them. I've talked to IDAM. And that was one of the first places I went to to make sure that it was even possible to sell. Because I didn't know if we could even get rid of it.
Yeah, I would like to see that in writing.
Yeah.
For the file.
Before you.
The attorney, that's why I went to the attorney afterwards. And we, we as commissioners have made sure that that we're, we're trying to make sure that there are no liabilities if we do get rid of it.
I think all the i's and all the t's are thought of a lot. I think it's a good move.
Oh, I definitely it is.
It just gets to be more and more of an expense.
How soon are you trying to unload this piece of property?
As soon as possible.
Can we give a favorable, or can we give a favorable approval today with the exception or with the condition that, that Kim has a chance to read through that? Before you guys would move any further?
Well, I think we ought to read it.
I think we ought to make sure because in thirty years, how can they not come back on us if something goes wrong? I mean, I don't know how you not.
I'll have you, I'll have the information from the attorney for you. And that way everybody can, before you make final decision.
I, I kind of like Tim. I would like to see a letter from, you know.
If you'd like to people until next meeting, that's fine. It isn't that critical.
Is there any active mitigation that's going on out there or is it just all monitoring?
It's all monitoring right now.
So we've, we've done everything that we've been required to do and taken all the steps as far as containment, cleanup. All we're doing right now is checking to make sure that something's not oozing out somewhere.
Right. We have a third party that takes care of that. And then also we have our highway department. There's a lot of times that it'll cave in a little bit. We have highway department bring in some birmingham soil. It's, it's time consuming. We have maintenance people. Everybody, we have a fence problem out there. People come in and tear the fence down. It's, it's a constant issue.
We can kind of blame that on some of the old commissioners.
Dave Ralph, Paul Andrews, Poch Wheeler. They forgot to have a denture.
Well, that's good, George. I'm glad you're working on that because that's, you, the last time I knew, you couldn't, you can't do anything with it. They can't build on it. You can't disturb whatever. So that'd be a great thing to get rid of. I just want to make sure.
It's probably not like you have a lot of people knocking on the door wanting to purchase.
Actually, we did have one of the neighbors talk about it. They weren't really serious about it, but they did come to us and talk to us.
Well, because they probably weren't as interested in making sure that the monitoring was done as it's required to do. And the person that you're talking to now has guaranteed you that that'll be done.
We have, there's a lot of that thing we have done. We have testing pipes coming out of there that it's amazing how much methane can.
Could we heat a county building? That'd be quite a little pipeline. Thank you, George. I'm sure we all look forward to the opportunity to sell this piece of property. Chad Nix? No, that's, that's, no, that's on the agenda. It's just not ready. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. As promised last month. Get an update on how the bids came in on phase one of the project. And how we're looking forward to phase two. So good news is bid team actually in on the engineer estimate from DPR. So very good news. Phase one is fully funded. Death free.
Fantastic.
Very good news. Well, we wanted to keep you guys up to date and we'll continue to keep you guys up to date on. We went on Monday and asked the commissioners to earmark ARP funding for the phase two of that project. Because that phase two part of that project, which covers Sherbusco, the estimation is currently six million, twenty-five thousand. And we don't expect to getting more than five million from SRF in this next funding round. So the overall schedule for this is the complete design for phase two, November of this year. Put it out to bid around December or January of twenty twenty-three. We hope to close on financing then by March of twenty twenty-three and then start construction on phase two in twenty twenty-three. So we were very excited, obviously, considering the amount of inflation that was occurring on everything else that bids came in and they hit a top nose. So so at this point, we just asked the commissioners and they agreed to, to put that earmark in their plan that they plan on presenting to council. So no request at this point. Just keeping you up to date on everything that's going on.
So, so on phase two, you could need a million?
That's what we asked to earmark.
And that would be back around January of twenty-three is when you'll start that or start asking for it or whatever. Okay. Great job on the estimate. Great job on the funding and, and getting the grants.
We were very excited. Phase one works out well. We're, you know, sewer district isn't in charge of billing maintenance and all that stuff. We're hoping phase two will, will get the same agreement with Sherbusco and hopefully keep those rates down as low as possible for all residents.
And is there an anticipated start and completion date on phase one?
Yeah, we would expect to close on the financial package that we're gonna be applying in June. And notice received will be issued then right after that. Current little bit of contractor expects to be onsite working in on this issue. Contractually, we've given them to the end of twenty twenty-three to complete. Their goal would be if they can get materials and supplies to be done in June.
In phase one will be a hundred and forty-three connections? And all those residents know what's going on now? Been notified and understand what their responsibility will be and what's going to happen?
Yeah. So we've had, we've had a specific mailing for the property. We've had public meetings and workshops where we invited everybody.
But you will mail something to each and everyone to know what's going on. Okay.
Required to buy.
I'm, I'm sure, but I didn't know where you stood on that. Thank you. Any other questions? We celebrate with you. Congratulations.
It's been a long journey. So. Thank you. Yeah, thank you.
Next item on our agenda is the Wagner Erwin Shealy Annual Wage Salary Analysis. Jennifer, would you come speak to that? And then Teresa, add in anything?
I am here today just to seek approval to proceed to have WIS come in and do salary analysis. They recommended that we have that done annually before the budget process. And we discussed it with personnel committee and the conclusion that personnel committee was, that it probably was more realistic to have that done every three to four years. So it has been three years now. Next year it'll be four years. So I think now is an appropriate time to have that done. You do have a memo for a quote for that from WIS. And that is a range between eighty-eight hundred and ten thousand, two hundred and forty dollars. I did bring this to the commissioners as well on Monday. And they voted to recommend it to be done. But they also asked, they requested that we also have WIS in some way address elected official salaries. So they did request that at the meeting, in that meeting on Monday. So that would be possibly an additional cost.
But I thought, I thought we've said all along that WIS will not touch the elected officials. They will or they just haven't? Do I, isn't that what we said, Jen, or not?
I guess I would just ask that question of them to adjust that in some way.
I think we were told it wasn't included. It didn't mean that they couldn't.
Oh, okay. I guess speaking for the personnel committee, I think we, we talked and we all decided if, if we're going to go with everything that WIS recommends to us, then we probably should do a salary analysis every three to four years. And we all kind of agreed with that. I know Councilman Wheeler's going to want to know where we come up with the ten thousand dollars. Well, we haven't figured that out yet. Maybe he could give us some help on that.
We did have that discussion on Monday a little bit. My understanding was there was possibly some funds and consulting.
Professional services, sorry.
Is that in your, is that in the commissioner's budget?
We have a line item for professional services, but not this in specifically. But we could pay for it out of that because it would be a professional service under a hundred thousand dollars.
You'll pay for that?
And then we would just budget for it.
The next three or four years, well, okay.
And it's just to maintain the system that we put into place.
So we know where we're at.
Right.
So we know if we're right online or lower high or where.
It's not going to be completed until October twenty twenty-two. Of course, there's not time to get it in for our budget this year. Wouldn't you be better off waiting till after the first of the year so we have the current figures for next year's budget?
We could. That's just an estimated time. And that was for last month. So now we might even be looking at November before it's concluded. Typically, if I'm wrong, but typically we usually approve the salary ordinance usually in December. So I mean, it might be tight. But that is an option if you wanted to, you could wait.
I think that would be an issue if we were looking at it every year, but we're not. It's like a three-year, three or four-year process. So I think if it gets in for us, that's great. And if not, I think that information would still be relative for next year. So I think if it gets in for us, that's great. And if not, I think that information would still be relative for next year. I am in favor of this process every three to four years. I am concerned that our next person on the agenda may, what she shares with us may have an impact on this.
Well, and again, it's, you don't have to take action on this. It's just, it's just going to give you a guide to see where salaries should be. And obviously it's dependent on finances, on whether any action can be done or whether we can actually pay people.
So do you want to wait on the next? With your permission, I would like to not take action on this until. Until our response on the comprehensive plan. Need a motion or are we okay with just? By consensus, you, we can change this.
We can table it.
Then that puts us back and we will likely not have it for this year.
Table it till after the next presentation.
Okay. Do I have a motion to table till after the next presentation? Motion in a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. And let it show unanimous. Teresa, would you like to introduce our guest?
Yes. Okay, forgive me. I don't remember her name. I've only met her one time and that sounds horrible.
I apologize for.
This is Paige from Baker Tilly. She did the in-depth review of our finances. And I can't remember which one of you was there. Jim, were you there?
I was there.
I don't know how you guys felt, but I was really sad after you presented that to us. So she's here to kind of let everybody know where we stand financially. All right. Well, this is like 52 page report, but in the interest of time, I'm just going to hit the highlights. It will normally take an hour to go through this report. Again, I'm just going to hit the highlights. This is a very timely document as you go into the budget season. This is going to be very helpful for you when you start looking at budgets and what might be as far as a balance budget is concerned. We've estimated all of your revenues, not only for 23, but going out through 2024. We do have some historical information in here as well. So you can see how you performed in the past. So again, I'm just going to hit the highlights. If you want to turn to page four. This graph on page four is showing how much property tax you collect and how much is returned to taxpayers in the form of credit. So if you look at 2021, in total for the county, you collected 7.1 million in property tax. 100,000 was not collected due to circuit breaker credits. So when you pay your tax bill, if you have a circuit breaker credit, that's property tax that you're not paying. So essentially it's unpaid property tax. So although you levy 7.24 million in 2021, you didn't collect all of that because of circuit breaker. Good news is you only have a 1.4% non-collection rate. That's pretty good. Some counties I work with, it's 20 to 25%. So thankfully your circuit breaker credits are relatively low. One big reason for that is your tax rates are pretty low. Most, about 70% of your district tax rates are below $2, which signals to us we're going to have a low circuit breaker impact. So that's good. That's good news. Let's go on to page number five. If you're curious for the entire county, there's about $520,000 of credits issued to taxpayers. Again, that's relatively low as a percentage. The higher the tax rate of the taxing unit, the more they're going to contribute to those circuit breaker losses. You can see the school contributes about 40% of those circuit breakers. The municipality is 30% and the county about 19%. So again, relatively low in comparison to other counties and things. That's a good, that's a good thing. Page number six, I wanted to give you a historical perspective on what's happening with your tax rates, your property tax rates and your assessed values. So the tax rates are the blue line there. So your tax rate since 2018 actually decreased by 5.5%. The reason primarily is because your assessed values are increasing. So there is a misconception that when your tax base grows and you get new development, you're going to get additional revenue. That's a misconception. You are maxed out at your property tax of what you can raise. When your property tax values go up, it just takes a lower tax rate to get that maximum levy. So that's why you see that inverse effect. Your assessed value has grown by 20% since 2018. And your tax rate has actually gone down by 5.5%. So your tax rate's lower right now. It's at 0.4138 than it was in 2018 at 0.4377. Also good news. Now here's where we get into areas of concern on page number seven. This is a graph of your major operating funds. You have a lot of funds here in the county, but we're just focusing on your major operating funds, which would be general, health, lit, public safety, edits, motor vehicle, highway, road and street and reassessment. Those are your major funds. If we look at your major funds, when you entered 2021, you actually had increasing cash all the way up through 2021. But now our projections are going the other way. What's primarily driving this is a substantial increase in personal services, which is salaries and wages. And I think that relates back to 2019. And you're going to see as we go through these schedules, the line items that have increased the most are salaries and wages. And that's really driving your, what we project as a reduction in your overall cash reserves. Let's go to the next page and again.
Can I ask a question here real quick? Because I want to make sure that I understand. So when the assessed values go up, the tax rate goes down. So we're not getting more money on the county level. So where is all that? My, my taxes have almost doubled in the last five years. Where's a lot of extra money going?
So all that's doing is it's lowering the tax rate. So I don't know why your taxes increased. It wasn't because of the increased tax rate.
No, it's assessed value.
Yeah, it's assessed value. So what's happening is it's just spreading that so that everybody else's tax rates have gone down, including yours. Even though your assessed value's gone up, your tax rate I can see has gone down. So there's no additional revenue. It's just, it takes a lower tax rate because you've got a larger tax base to generate $7.1 million.
There's no additional revenue, revenue. Then where's all that money that's coming out of my pocket going?
It's, the tax rate is being reduced. So there's others that are not paying as much because the tax rate was reduced. And you may be paying more, but others are paying less.
But isn't everybody's assessed value rising?
Not necessarily. Not necessarily. I mean, yes, all over the state, we're seeing increased assessed value, but there's properties going out of business that were being sold at tax sale. I mean, it kind of all equals out. And I can guarantee you the state has, has certified that the county can only raise in 2021, for instance, 7.1 million. Regardless of what your tax base does, that's all you're going to be able to raise. So if your tax rate goes up, it'll take a lower tax to get that 7.1 million. If your assessed value goes down, it'll take a higher tax rate.
And let me ask the why question. Why does the state say this is the maximum we can raise 7.1?
So that, the history is back in the 1970s, all taxing units submitted to the state what they thought their maximum property left, the tax levy should be at that time, which was different. It just varied all over the state. And it's been growing by a small growth factor ever since. So in 2022, your maximum levy was allowed to go grow by 4.3%, but that's all. And that's your primary funding source. So every, if other recurring expenses are growing by five or 6%, then you start getting those budget gaps. But it's just, it's a law in the state of Indiana that every taxing unit has a maximum that it can raise. Now, when you can go above the max is like with debt service. You can issue bonds and have a property tax to repay those bonds and that there, that's above the maximum levy. Your Q cap development fund is above the maximum levy. So there's, those are the only two ways you can really get above the maximum levy. Unless you file an appeal with the state, which there's very few ways that you can qualify for an appeal.
So if my understanding is correct, our rate is below the maximum.
You're, well, right now, because of, I don't know what reason, the county council did approve a levy below the maximum by, I think, 100,000 for this year. But that's not all, a lot.
Okay.
So you're close to being at the max.
Okay. All right.
So on page number eight, we kind of looked at your major funds. What we tend to look at is we look at what you're planning to spend as it compares to what you're bringing in at a given year. Just forget about cash reserves right now. What are your, what are you planning to spend compared to the estimated receipts? So in the general fund, your budget as it is now, we would need to use 1.2 million in reserves to cover that budget as it is now. So in other words, you are outspending your estimated receipts for 2022 by 1.2 million. Now, it doesn't look like the county usually spends its entire budget, which is good. But if you were to spend everything that you're approved to spend right now, you will eat into those cash reserves. And I'm going to show you that when we get to the, to the cash flow schedule. I think it'll be clear at that time. The only one of these major funds that are, that's not eating into its reserves is the CEDAT fund, the Economic Development Income Tax Fund. There you actually have surplus where you're not spending everything that you bring in, but that's pretty typical with a CEDAT fund. Because oftentimes you're saving up or doing capital projects. So we do have some imbalances here and, and we're going to go through those. I know that the county did increase its cumulative bridge fund rate, which is not outside the maximum levy. So what happened when you did that is it reduced the levy on health and reassessment, which is fine. You've got plenty of cash reserves there. You can cover that for a while, but at some point you're probably going to have to reduce Q bridge and put it back on health and reassessment. Because it's all under one umbrella. It's just moving things around. With Q capital development, you actually have an opportunity there. Your Q capital development fund is not at the maximum rate. It's at 0.0150. You can go up to 0.0333 and you can generate an additional amount of revenue, net circuit breaker, $327,000. That's quite a bit of money, especially if you have capital projects that, that you want to do. There is a window of opportunity to do that. You have between January and the end of May. So we're getting up close to the deadline. If you wanted to make it effective for taxes payable 2023, I mean, you still have time, but just barely enough time. Or you can just do it in any year between January and the end of May. And so that's an opportunity. It will be patient overall county rate, though. You have to realize that, but it's only by less than two. I mentioned that there's a kind of a surplus at CEDAT. So you could, if you wanted to try to balance out some of these other budgets, you could shift some expenses from an operating fund to your edit fund of about 400,000. Those would be recurring costs though. So, you know, that would maybe take away from some of your projects that you want to do. And then you have the jail lit fund where you can increase that a bit to cover a little bit more of the operating costs of, of the jail. I know right now we need to kind of hold on to those cash reserves to help cover some of the project costs. So you've got plenty of reserves in there right now to do that. I think one of the biggest things that, that we're going to say as we go through this and work with the budget processes. The primary goal when you're budgeting is to match your budget with your receipts. Forget about cash reserves unless you're doing one-time capital purchases. Just, so I'm going to give you an example of that. Let's go ahead to page 13. This is your general fund. And I'm going to spend the rest of time on this and then really go quickly convert this devil to getting it into time. This, page 13 is the general fund cash flow schedule. And we do have three years of historical activity so you can see how you perform against the budget. So on the left-hand side, there's an index numbering column, and that's going to help me kind of point you to the line items that I want you to look at. So look at line number 17. That's your total operating receipts. So you can see in 2019, you had 12.8 million of receipts. 2020, it went down to about 11 million of receipts. 2021, about 11.5 million. Now going forward, this is what I want you to look at as far as budget purposes. 2022, we're estimating about 12 million in receipts. 2023, 12,645,000 roughly. That is the important number right there. So if you were to ask me Paige, what budget should we have in general fund to have a balanced budget? I would say do not exceed 12,645,000. Now, you can exceed that if you want for one-time capital projects because you do have some reserves. But it is a concern to us that it would appear your recurring expenses are outpacing the receipts. And how I can tell that is look at line 27. This is your recurring operating dispersments. In 2019, yeah, they were lower than your receipts by about $2 million. So your receipts were 12.8. You had dispersments of 8.5. You actually increased your overall cash reserve by $2 million. So at the very bottom, line 43, you had 4.7 million at the end of the year. That's great. That's a 58% cash reserve. Meaning your reserves are 58% of your dispersions. Outstanding. We would not want you to fall below 15%. That's the floor. If you could be somewhere between 15% and 50%, that's very good. So yeah, that's awesome. But look what starts to happen in 20 and 21. And really what's driving that is the personal services budget on line 20. In 2020, your personal services budget went up 14% and in 2021, it went up 48%. Those are significant increases. And you can see what's happening now to your cash reserves on line 43. You used almost 600,000, put you down to 4.1. Then in 2021, you used another 460,000, put you down to 3.7. Still 30% is a good range, but look how it's trending going forward. I think that's what concerns us the most. It appears that you would need to reduce some other areas in your budget to, to continue to fund the salary changes that you've had for the last two years. In 2020, we're projecting, again, remember I said you'll probably use 1.2 million of reserves. We're projecting your reserves go down to 18%. Now you're getting close to the floor. In 2023, 14% and 2024, 11%. Now, I want to mention that the operating dispersments on line 27, we flatlined that. So 2020, you have a budget right now of 13,273. We typically built in a 3% growth, but since you're not balanced at even 0%, we just kept it flatlined. This chart, I'm a pretty, I'm a visual person, so I like the chart on the next page because this is showing you the red dotted line is the floor as far as your cash is concerned. The green is the ceiling, which is 50%. You can see you were above 50% in 2019. But then 20, you start creeping down. 2022 is an estimate, but again, if you would spend everything, you're going to get close to that floor. So again, county doesn't usually spend its entire budget, but I wanted you to see perhaps worst case scenario, if you did spend your entire budget. And remember the goal, try to, try to get close to that estimate of annual receipt when you go into your 2023 budget process. So, but again, the rest of these, I'm going to kind of, well, I'm going to stop. If any of you have any questions on the general fund, is that it? It's the most important fund where most of your operating activities are funded.
So line 27, is that the personal services you were talking about?
Line, so.
Or no, I'm sorry, line 20, line 20.
Line 20 is the operating, or I'm sorry, the personal services, yes.
So we talk about personal services. Break that down. What all is that?
Salaries, wages, benefits, health insurance, pretty much anything associated with personnel on a salary and benefit level.
Thank you.
And really that was the, the biggest increase that we saw as we went through your different line items was the salaries and wages. So the next fund is on page 15. So the next fund is on page 15. And I'm going to start off with these kind of quickly. Line five for your operating receipts. So we're looking at 2023, you're going to bring in roughly 1,165,000. We don't have the final certification of the local income tax yet. We should get an estimate probably in July, but let's just say it's flatlined. And, you know, you haven't really been budgeting very much of that, which is fine. You don't have to budget it if you're saving it up for projects. That's totally fine. I do think there's room if you need to, only if you need to, to transfer over some operating expenses and pay for it out of CEDAT. Like even general, you could, you could take $400,000 of operating expenses out of general, pay for it out of CEDAT instead. That would help your general fund. It, CEDAT can be used for any purpose, even if you have a plan, you've been, maybe you plan it to allow it to be used for operating purposes. So that's something you can do. Bottom line is you've, you've got a good cash reserve in there. At the end of 2020, 2021, you ended with 2.2 million. So you've got some funds available in there. A lot of times counties use that for capital projects and improvements. I totally get it. But if you wanted to, you could also use it for some cash, probably some operating items as well. So page 16, that chart again, you're well above where you need to be. So there's really not a concern of that. Health department, page 17, on line number eight, you can see that current projections for 2023 is 595,000. Now, this one, I will say, you know, the levy did get reduced in 2022 because the Q bridge went up. So this levy actually had to come down 100,000 to keep it within the maximum levy. So you've got reserves in there, which is fine. You're going to be able to cover, um, you know, a budget of even 700,000 if you needed to, but please be mindful that sometime in the future, you will likely lose your property tax back from Q bridge or another control fund into this fund because it's not sustainable as it is now. I think you're burning down cash reserves, which I'm a budget person. I think that's a great idea. I think you should burn down some cash reserves in this fund for a couple of years, but eventually you may have to ship that money back.
Excuse me, we have a question from.
Just that question, just to remind that the council that we have borrowed from the general fund. Several funds in the last six, seven years. So now all that money has been used in the health.
Yeah.
So we, so when we, the county wants to call the fund, who will then, what year? But last year. So we completely have this operating budget. It's just, I think, I'm taking tell us.
Right. It's pretty typical for counties to ship levies back and forth. As far as the operating budget, it's, it's fully funded, but just remember in the future you may have to ship somebody's back. It, this is typical procedure. It's not something that's uncommon. And even page 18, you can see the health department's cash reserves have done well above 4.5. So you're just utilizing some of those reserves for a short period of time, which is totally fine. Really, you know, it'd be ideal to get them between the lines here. So you still have ways to go. You can use some more of the cash reserves just to get them between 15 and 50%. Local revenue stream, this fund looks fine. You know that you can't use this fund for salaries and wages, so it's really just project driven, whatever you need on an annual basis. It looks completely fine. You've got a nice healthy reserve in that fund. Moving on to page 21, this is your lit public safety. So this is your local income tax, public safety. This fund is starting to look unsustainable for future years. The only thing really that is, is a receipt in this fund is that local income tax, and it's running about 1.5, 1.6 million. The salaries and wages line, and, and maybe you shifted something from general. I didn't investigate exactly if that was just raises or shifting more salaries over to lit public safety, but that increased by 13% in 2022. So if you look going forward, line 18, where it says increase, increasing cash, if that's negative, it means you're using cash reserve. So it looks like this has got an imbalance of almost 350,000. So yes, you can fund this year's budget. You could fund a 1.9 million dollar budget next year, but that's, it's not sustainable going into the future unless your local income tax should start increasing, which we would hope, but people have concerns about the economy right now. So I, I don't know that, you know, that's, that local income tax is strongly tied to the economy. So if that serves the tank, the numbers are going to go the other way. So just be mindful that right now it looks like you've got a bit of imbalance. It would be better to, to make sure your budget's around 1.6 in this fund. So then 2022, you can see what's happening there. You've been pretty strong, but now it's starting to go the other direction. Motor vehicle highway. Many counties are struggling with this fund. The reason is, and you probably remember this, in 2019, the state required you to take half of your gas distributions that go in this fund and put it in a restricted fund. Well, that creates a real issue because most counties, like yourselves, are using this fund to, most of it, most of this fund's expenses are salaries and wages. So if you take half of your revenue stream and you restrict it, then you just cause issues with paying salaries and wages. So on line 13, we made an assumption that you're going to ship some of your cost out of motor vehicle highway into restricted, about 1.6 million. This assumption just goes along with what you've been doing the last few years. You've already been doing this, which is great. You try to shift as much as you can into that restricted fund, and, and you have to do that because otherwise you won't be able to run your budget. So I think if we shift 1.6, which is probably the maximum we can shift, you're still going to be out of balance by about 200,000 in this fund unless you can get your budget down to about 1.6. You can see historically what you spent, it's about 1.2. So I, I think that this is totally doable. I think you can get a balanced budget in this fund, um, just based on previous expenditures. But again, if we look at 2023, on line six, what do we estimate as the revenue coming in? It's about 1.6 million. So that kind of, that should give you a good benchmark of where your budget should be for 2023. The graph, you're above the, the, you know, cash reserve level, but it is, it does have that decline projected out more importantly. Reassessment on page 25. So this fund took, um, or had a reduction in levy above line two, um, by, no, 600,000. And again, this has to do with Q bridge. Again, fine, because you've had a lot of reserves. And again, as a budget person, I probably would have told you, hey, why don't you take the levy off that fund for a few years and burn down that cash reserves? And so that's what we have projected going forward. We just took the levy off and reallocated it to general because you needed it more there. That doesn't mean you have to do that, but even taking it off a couple of years, you still have plenty of cash reserves. But again, a little bit of a warning, probably sometime in maybe 2027, you might have to ship some money back over to this fund. Because see how far up you have reserves? That's way more cash reserves than you needed reassessment, really. So you're doing what you need to do. Let's get those down probably around, you know, between the two lines, and I think you'll be fine. But it's kind of borrowed time because you're going to get used to having that in general, and then at some point you may have to ship that money back. Moving on to Q bridge, page 27, again, you did increase that levy there. I don't see any issues with this fund other than, you know, in the future, you may have to reduce that levy back down. We could go up and down whenever we need to. Again, we see counties do that. Just remember that the Q bridge fund is within your maximum levy limitation. So if you increase the levy, it will have to come off of either general reassessment or health, because those are all controlled funds. The Q capital development on the other hand is outside the maximum levy. So if you increase the rate on that, it doesn't affect those funds. And by the way, you can use Q capital development for bridge projects. So that's food for thought there. Page 29 is the Q capital development fund. And again, if you look on, you're raising about 270,000 right now, and that's at the point oh one five oh rate. If you increase this rate to the max of point oh three, 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 you can generate an additional 327,000. So if, if you need that for capital budgets, it's something that you have in the back pocket you can do sometime in the future if you wish to do that. And it is the commissioners that would have to approve that. Page 31 is the MVA restrictive. You get half of your gas tax goes into this fund, which is 1.6 million. You can only use it on construction, reconstruction, and preservation of roads. That's all you can use it for. You can use it for salaries and wages if you could tie those to that construction, reconstruction, and preservation road. So the county's done a great job with allocating as much as it possibly came into this fund. And the reason why it can tell is in 2020, 2021, you have a nearly zero balance. That's great. That just basically means you're trying to allocate as much you can over to that one. So we're just going to assist you if you continue to do that. Page 33 is the lit correctional rehab facilities. So this is your local income tax for, for the correctional facility. This is where you've got some cash reserves built up. At the end of 2021, it was 2.7 million. My understanding is some of those cash reserves are going to go towards your jail construction costs. So you've got some monies there to utilize. You're allowed to use up to 20% of your lit distribution, which is 1.8 million for operating. You're about, I think you're about 15% right now. So you have a little bit of room that you could actually put another 91,000 of operating costs in here if you needed to. So this fund looks pretty good. Page 35 is your drain makeups fund. And I find this in every county I work in, there's always very healthy balances. This fund is very restrictive. The reason why I think there's healthy balances is because this fund is very restricted. Obviously, you can only use it for things related to drainage and certain drains too, I think. So I don't know what it is, but it seems like all over the state, there's just not a lot of use for this fund or people aren't utilizing. But you've got plenty of reserves in there. And again, it's very restrictive. We can't transfer it out for use for anything else. It has to be for your units. Page 37 is your redevelopment commission fund, your tip fund. Again, very healthy balances. You know, if we have capital plans or capital overheads, it certainly could have been in this fund, but it's, it's doing what it needs to be doing. It's, it's generating the revenue you need for your various projects, and you're paying debt service out of which it has plenty of coverage. This also looks, looks to be good. Page 39 is a debt service fund. So I was talking about you can issue debt or enter into a lease rental agreement and have a property tax to repay that debt. That's what you did here, and that's outside your levy on it. So that's good. But it's going to be maturing on February 1st of 2024. So you might want to start thinking about issuing another bond because that way it'll keep the rate stable and the rate won't drop off. So I'm sure there's something that you need to accomplish, or maybe we've already thought about those. I think my head probably has been talking with you about reissuing bonds.
Yeah.
It would be good to keep the tax rate constant. All right. So the next page is 41, or 46 are fund descriptions, which I think are something that's helpful during the budget season. If you want to know what a fund may be used for statutorily, we have this for you. This is most of your funds, most of the funds that you would normally spend out of. I'm not going to go through every one of these, but if you're just curious as to statutorily, what each of these funds can be used for, we've got all of those descriptions there. So when you go through budget season, we might have one for you. Page 47 is just a recap of all of your hidden cash balances with the ones you talked about. And again, just so you can base it on current modules, we do show those balances of line. Again, you have to base on couple. Page 48 is all of your outstanding debt, which you don't have a lot of. A lot of counties I work with, this page is completely filled out with outstanding debt. You've only got four debt issues outstanding. And you can see how much is outstanding as of February 1st, 2022, and when the final maturity is, and what, what the funding source is. Three of them are paid for tip revenue, and one of them is paid for property tax. And then the final pages are comparisons. I think it's always interesting to see how to compare with your surrounding counties. So page 39 is your local income tax rate. Your total county local income tax rate is 1.6829%. And you're kind of on the lower end when you compare with the other counties that are surrounding you. You, you can actually raise up to 2.5%. So you're well above 2.5. So if you ever need to in the future, you could increase public safety, local income tax, economic development, local income tax. So you have that as a option for you. Page 50 is the 2022 certified property tax rates, kind of sort of in the middle when you compare to others and others around the counties. So your, your property tax rate right now is point four one three eight. Remember, that's lower than it was in 2018. So that's, that's pretty good. Page 51 is the property tax levies per capita. The reason why we did per capita is because, you know, obviously the larger counties are going to have way more levies. So it's really better to look at it per capita, how much are you raising per person? So Whitley County, your property taxes are $218 per person. And then you can look at how that varies. Look at how it counts as $232 per person. So it's kind of right in where everybody else is. Maybe even a bit lower than a few others, so. Page 52 is your net assessed values. This is your tax base. We also did this per capita. So your tax base per capita is 52.7 million. Cosiosco is like 79.6 million. And that just means that they have higher values, higher net assessed values. So again, you're kind of, throw out Cosiosco, and you're right where you need to be with others surrounding you. So I just threw a whole bunch of information. Now, you don't know how long it took me, but again, usually it's about an hour or so to do three of them. I just, I truly hope this is focal 42 when you go into the budget season, because we've already done a pretty good job estimating your revenues. Obviously, once we get more information from the state, we can massage those a little bit more, and we can certainly help the auditor's office with, with the revenue as much of the budget season. We can come back and talk to you too after we get, maybe, that progress. I can let you know how you look.
So if we're going to adjust the levies, that happens, needs to happen next month?
Yes, yes. During budget season, yes, you can help get recommendations on how you want to adjust the levies if you would like. But yeah, that's before you adopt, before you adopt the 2020.
It needs to happen this month so it can be passed in May, right?
Oh, you mean for the Q capital development fund?
Oh, that's the only one that is May-driven? Okay.
If you want to adjust the levies for budget season, you just need to do that before you adopt.
Okay. All right. Now that you've completed this report, and this is a five-year, you, you said the template, you have the template now. And, and so you could do this works every year?
We can. And since we have this model set up, if you wanted to build in raises or you wanted to build in capital projects, we could easily build those in, and then I could tell you, okay, this is how your cash reserves are going to look, or this is how it's going to affect your fund. So, yeah, with the, this model is extremely helpful going through budget season. Extremely. But, yeah, we can update it every year. It's very eye-opening.
Yes. With the, the drainage maintenance, there's really no. With the the drainage maintenance, there's really no place we can move that.
No, you can't. And I think it's on page forty six that describes.
Thirty six is a. Do you know how that works, Tom?
No.
What do we have, Teresa, about nine hundred?
Yeah, so we in our county, we have around nine hundred drains. And it's so interesting. I find it extremely interesting on how they're paid for. Every single drain is taxed individually. And if you have any, so if your property drains into five different drains, you pay on five different drains. It may only be a few dollars a year. But that's kind of how that works. So I kind of explain it that every single drain has like its own little bank account and you can only use that fund, those funds on that drain only. There's absolutely no leeway on that.
So so it accumulates. And I always kind of referred to it as a highway system for water. Because if you're, if you got a county drain up here and and it has to go to the river, it might go through three other drains and you and you pay on those three other drains also. But that's that's how, I mean, we we have a lot of county tiles, nine hundred of them. Noble County does watersheds. So they they take a watershed and and tax accordingly on the watershed. And in their way, and correct me if I'm wrong, Teresa, is the wheel that squeaks a lot, a lot of times gets fixed up there. Where here, that money stays with that particular drain. So so it's it's, but that's what that's money, that's that drain's money.
Yes, and really the way we do it, I think, is the best way. Because when you do an entire watershed, all of those people pay in that watershed. However, if something's wrong over here, the person who lives over here is still paying for it. So that's why we do all of them individually. So only the people that use that drain are paying for it.
So when we talk in terms of, we use the word drain. Does that include all the ditching and everything that that water drains through?
It's it's a it's a it's an approved county tile. If you see these farmers systematically tanning, that's not that.
But if we have, we have open ditches, is that included in this?
Some, some cases it is, yes. And and on that, you sometimes have to dip them. You have to keep the brush off of them and that, so it's.
So that maintenance is for those is included in out of this budget?
And the thing too is people that pay on that particular drain, they have a say in what their assessment is. If they want to build that fund, knowing at some point that that drain's going to need to be fixed and it's a large one, they might want to start building that reserve up so they have the money by seven years down the road to fix that. So it's.
You can actually only collect four years, so.
Whatever, yeah.
It's really interesting.
So just on on the side, and I'm sorry, we have this ongoing concern out at Blue Lake. Does this fit any of that?
That's not, that's not up, that's how he owns. That's on private land. And sometime back in, I want to say, oh, gosh, I might be speaking totally wrong. I want to say fifty years ago, they basically went in and put that structure that's there without getting any permission at all. But when D N R found out about it, they kind of just let it go. So to fix it, because we're getting kind of way off task, they would have to get the land owner's approval and also D N R's approval, which takes a very, very long time. So that's where that's.
To set up a county drain might take two to four years. Go through the process of filing for it and then court hearings and everything else. It's it's pretty intense of how you have to do that. What what stage is the situation?
So right now, so we had a meeting with the D N R, Amy Biggs. Nathan was there, Nathan was there to kind of figure it out because everybody's kind of saying it's their problem, it's their problem, it's their problem, it's their problem. So we had a meeting to get everybody in the room. And we worked with the D N R and Amy, well, specifically Amy did, on letting the residents know. And they have to file themselves as Blue Lake is a group to the D N R for this, for the permit to get the culvert with the flat, which is what they're wanting. The D N R.
Blue Lake Association.
Yes, they have to do that. That takes a long time. I don't know why, that's just what the D N R does. I don't know. Takes a very, very long time to get it done. They're completely against it. Obviously, they want everything as natural as possible. They want to just take the structure out entirely and just have it be open. But the residents don't want that right now. So right now, they've got to put in a permit to get that done. It takes a really long time to to do that. And then on top of that, the you have the land owner has to let them do that. So there's a lot of moving parts. So sorry, Paige.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I guess just one more. Do the commissioners have you on speed dial?
Thank you. Thanks for having me.
Well, that gives us some homework between now and budget time. Also going to have to communicate effective pay install law to our department heads before they submit their budgets. Any other discussion in regarding to what Paige shared with us?
I'm mindful we're discussing that. I guess this was Monday. I presented to the commissioners about using the artillery to help you with my first budget cycle. And they were quite, they gave me a favorable pass to do that. It's a not to receive fifteen thousand. And they requested that I do that as an additional preparation out of my credit and I completely expend them. And just coming to you guys to see if that would be okay to be able to do that. So I'm not going to lie to you guys and say I know the process of the budget and I would like to better understand it. So I am asking you to use her, Paige would be the one that would come in and work with me to do the ins and outs. And I would not need to use every service that they offer, but some of the things that I am unsure of. So I would just like to get a blessing to be able to.
Sounds like a wise decision to me.
We'll pay for any mistake later.
Do we need a motion or is this? Did you guys do a motion?
Yeah.
When it will be, when it happens, then we'll have to act on it, so.
If you guys will approve that additional.
I'm favorite of it, especially since it's your first one.
That's great. Commissioner report.
Sure. As we, you guys obviously see on your agenda, the art plant ordinance. So we've decided to not do that. We are coming up with a plan for that. And I'm hoping that we have that ready to present to you guys at your next meeting. We plan on budgeting for things like the regional sewer district project, retrofitting the jail so we can get move community corrections over there, which that's going to be, we're estimating around three million dollars. And also the highway department, with all of the escalation clauses in there and everything being so expensive, they're not going to be able to do as much work as they had planned for. Well, as commissioners, we think, you know, roads are one of the most basic services that we provide to our constituents. So and that's one of the appropriate funds or appropriate uses that we can use those funds on. So we're also planning on helping Katie supplement her budget so she can get all those projects done that she did want to because it is very important. And this last winter was extremely hard on our county roads. And I'm sure all of you are aware of that as well. And also, the, so I had a meeting with Surf Broadband. And I'm not sure if you guys know what's going on with them. So they're in the middle of the project with the city. And they also plan on expanding to Tri Lakes, Cherabuzco, South Whitley, Larwell, I believe, and the Blue Lake area. And we're not, obviously, that's on their their own dime because there is a business argument to be made. They can make money by paying for that and they can get it back in a timely manner. So also with the art funds, we're going to earmark some funds for broadband infrastructure to help places like Jefferson Township that there would never be a business argument ever. Because you can't, the way I explain it is you can't expect the business to come and provide a service if they're never going to make any money, in fact, lose money. So places like that. But once they get into the municipalities, the idea is that they're going to kind of finger out into the more rural areas. So I think that that's really great news. And I think we're on a really good path. And they've done really good with the city, so I'm excited about that. Obviously, the jail's coming along. Tony, do you want to speak to that at all? Okay. Yeah, sorry, I made you sit through two hours.
So my name is, well, first, good morning, council. Update on the jail project, where we stand. We are working through the design modification phase. So as you're all aware, we are utilizing a prototype design approach, meaning we're using the tried and true jail design that we've implemented at other counties and working through making all of the appropriate changes with the sheriff's department to ensure it's not somebody else's jail, but it's with the county's jail. We are as close to being all the way through that phase. Sean Martin, the jail commander's been fantastic. He's made excellent decisions, quick decisions. So we're moving through that very quickly. There is a court component that we're through that design. The judge has approved that portion of the the jail project. And Sean and I are visiting Coscosco County's J C A P program. They've got a very successful program up there. And we're designing a space in the jail specifically for this, the J C A P program. It's an acronym that stands for jail chemical addiction program, I believe. Pretty sure. It's it's, I'm I'm still learning all the ins and outs of it. But a lot of other jail are implementing it, but they're just making spaces work for those programs. We have an opportunity to design a space for this program. So we're very excited about that. So we're very close to getting through the design modification phase, which means the design team will continue on to to finish the construction documents, which are all of the drawings that are used in the bidding and the construction phase. We are currently also working through the site plan. So the the county has has got a very nice piece of property for this facility to sit on. And we've got to decide how we want to site it on the on the piece of property. It is, it is very appropriately sized. I feel like as your architect, one of the worst things I could do is stick it right center of the property and not think about the future. So we are thinking about the future and how that facility may grow in in the future. But we're also thinking about how some of the the excess land, not that there's a lot. I'm not saying you bought too big of a piece of property, but how some of that other land can be utilized should other county facilities end up out there. Or maybe you'd like to sell, you know, one or two acres of that for some other development. But just want to be good stewards of that property on on your behalf. So running parallel with the design, we are selecting the construction manager. As you guys are aware, or maybe aware, the county selected to deliver the construction of this jail, utilizing a construction manager at risk. Meaning you hire a construction manager, they have the ability to provide you a guaranteed maximum price for construction cost of the facility. And the architect and the construction manager and county will work together well and deliver this building. But there is a very prescriptive path that we have to follow to onboard that construction manager. And it includes the assembly of the construction manager selection committee, which some of you are on. It involves a request for proposal, which is out. We're selecting or we're we're collecting. We hope to collect those those proposals. The fifteenth, I believe, the sixth fifteenth or the sixteenth, I've got it written down. I know, Kenny, we've been working together on on solidifying the schedule. We presented a schedule and then the selection committee elected to accelerate that that schedule so we could get through the selection process. So we're we're solidifying some some meeting dates that we have to have. So the goal for that is to have a, to be in a position where the selection committee can make a recommendation to the board of commissioners on a construction manager by the by the June sixth commissioners meeting. So there's some work that we that we've got to do and we've got to do it quickly to be in that position. We anticipate from from selecting a construction manager, the very next step would be for them to do a cost estimate to make sure that the design of the facility is on par with where we think it's going to be and that it fits the county's budget. We have a high degree of confidence that that's going to happen because this is a design that we know well. And we have actually a recent cost estimate for another project that is nearly identical. So I don't anticipate any surprises when it comes to that cost estimate. I anticipate that we'll have the lines done and ready to go out to bid to contractors August first. We typically give them about four weeks to bid. So it'll be the end of August, August thirty first will be opening bids. And we'd like to give them notice to proceed and break ground two weeks after that.
Thank you.
I know that was a whole lot of information by our host sort of thing. But are there any questions that I can answer for you about the jail, the design or the the process that we're at?
Contractors, you think will bid on that?
So I think when it, the construction manager, we've we've specifically invited forty. But it is a public selection process. So anybody can can select a proposal. And those construction manager will put it out to bid. And when they do that, they'll break it into anywhere from nine to fifteen bid packages. And each one of those bid packages, I would anticipate, we will get anywhere from two to five bids. So so whatever that math works out, it'll be a tremendous amount of contractors that are bidding. But but they're not bidding on the whole project. It'll be a contractor that bids on the masonry, a contractor that bids on the mechanical and so on and so forth.
So who will they go through then?
One of the construction manager. And we'll open, that'll be a public bidding process. So on bid day, it'll it'll be, I will be there. The commissioners likely be there, the sheriff will likely be there. It'll be a public meeting and we'll have a pile of bids for these different bid packages. And we'll open every one of them. We'll read their number out loud. We'll record it and then we'll take those bids under into advisement.
So we don't have to take the lowest bid?
Do not have to take the lowest bid, but if you don't, you got to have a pretty thorough gun.
Good reason why.
And parameters have been put in place to make sure that all local companies have the ability not only to bid and do the work, but have the ability to meet what is expected from that, from them through the way that the contracts are wrote.
Yeah.
So there's not going to be any verbiage that would exclude a small local contractor from doing his trade in this project.
A hundred percent for it. So that'll be really insurance with the construction management firm. And we haven't selected that construction manager yet. But that's one of the things that we've included in our request for proposal, which is what we sent out to the construction managers. It's a, in your proposal to us, tell us how you're going to do this aspect of the project and this aspect of the project. And one of those things was how are you going to ensure local participation? So the construction manager will be responsible for that. But we'll be there to make sure that one, from from the county side, you guys tell us, hey, who are the local people that 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 we need to look at? Because we'll want to look for, we want to make sure that they're capable of doing the work. But we want to structure those bid packages to make sure that they've got a a good fair shot to earn the work. Good question.
Any other questions? Thank you, Tony. We appreciate your work. We appreciate the updates.
I hope you come back more often.
You know, the the commissioners have asked me to do this in the last, I think, two months. It just hit my schedule way long, but I plan to be here on a regular basis here.
That keeps us all up to date.
Let's try to move him up to the first. Yeah. And Tony, we're going to move you way up in the agenda and try to get you in and out of here just for your time and for our expense mode. But we'll we'll try to do that. I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have?
So we talked about art plan, the jail, surf. Obviously, yesterday was election day. Our election. Obviously yesterday was election day, our election staff did wonderful. It's obviously not a vacation day for them, they have a super, super long day. So I'm really thankful for them, they did a really good job. And also the poll workers, it's a really long day and you don't really get paid anything, so I just want to thank everybody who did that. Oh, George left. Okay, does anybody have any questions?
Seeing none, thank you, Teresa. Does anyone want to offer to make a motion regarding the WIS contract amount for the end, for this every three year evaluation of salaries?
I think we need it, but after we see, it's kind of scary to do, I think we need to keep it up.
Well, what Baker Tilly just brought us on the wages or personal expenses, services, I really think we need to, and the commissioners have a line item for the money to pay for. I really think we need to get that down, see where we're at. I know our insurance, health insurance went up, it goes up every year, that's, that's, that's a gimme. But my goodness, that's, we spend a lot of money for employees and we need to know, we need to know where, where we need to be, way too high, not too low. I make a motion that we, we hire WIS to do a salary analysis to come out of the commissioners' line item, what personal.
Professional services.
Professional services. Whenever Jennifer can get it set up.
Can I make a comment? Can we?
Actually, no. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion to second, now you can make a comment.
Can they include elected officials in that to see if they can?
I think Jen was going to inquire about that.
So do you want that in my motion or are you going to inquire about it before we do anything with that? What does a council want to do with it? Pardon me?
I don't need to inquire on it.
Okay. Okay.
Do you know why that wasn't done in the previous study?
Were you here when the other summary was done?
I was here, but not in the [inaudible].
Okay.
My understanding was that it was done, it was just done differently than employees. So elected officials and a few other positions that are classified as special occupations. And one in particular is the highway department director. Those positions were job matched rather than factor. And that just means that they were compared to other counties and what were, other counties are paying those positions. So it wasn't just elected officials, it was also a few other positions. But my understanding is that elected officials are asking that they be looked at more like other positions and somewhat factor. So we can ask that that be done or that maybe WIS talked to the elected officials and get more information from them, why they, you know, feel like they've been treated unfairly or whatnot, but we can, we can have them address it at least. But it wasn't that WIS didn't include elected officials, it's just that they, they didn't factor them, but they analyzed them differently.
I just would assume elected officials would be compared to other elected officials on the same job with the same similar population count?
That is what happened.
I think that's how it should be then.
Well, but there's, I agree with that. There's things that are going to be factored too, like, you know, an elected official in whatever position in our county might supervise five people and that same elected official in another county might supervise 25 people. So there are other things I think that plays in, that play into just factoring.
It's not as simple as maybe what.
So, so my understanding is that our elected officials would like to be compared or factored as if they were department heads, given their job responsibilities, should that be considered in that?
Not only that they be compared to other counties, but then also considered that they're on an equal level to department heads. And I think that's where the feeling of inequity comes, is that our department heads are paid above what level they're essentially department heads as well. So it's, you can consider all of those factors.
I guess you have to, well, that's for your time, I guess.
And we have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
Thank you.
All in favor of the motion to pursue this consultation and for the commissioners to pay for it out of professional services? Raise your right hand and let it show it is unanimous. We have two sets of minutes to approve, first being the March 28th commissioners' council joint meeting. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of that meeting? Motion and a second?
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you, let it show it's unanimous.
I, I do have a comment. Teresa, how do you want your name up here?
Basinger.
It's got the green in here.
I think, yeah, I think that may have been before, yeah. I know, I, I forget my name.
We also have the minutes from our regular meeting on April 5th. Do I have a motion to accept those minutes?
So moved.
And second?
Second.
Moved, it's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, raise your right hand and let us show it was six yes and one abstention. Hearing none, we'll work our way around the table.
Can I make a comment?
Yes.
Since we're getting ready to do our budget, I know this was brought up maybe in the personnel committee, I'm not sure where it was brought up that, but can we have a list of what employees benefits are at the budget? So when we go through everyone, we know where they actually are.
Mean their wages and.
Benefits and vacations, we want the whole package. I think you should, what do you think?
A lot of, how many employees?
Already compiled?
That's 240.
It's not already compiled when you bring up their profile, I guess I'm expecting.
Didn't we talk about doing that, a benefits estimate?
Yeah, I think a benefits estimate will be valuable in there. And, and employees need to know what they are actually receiving beyond salary. It's not that way everywhere. I think that's a good idea. You have anything to add to that, Jennifer? So you can work with the auditor to accomplish that?
I, I don't know if that'll be something we'll be able to get in line right now. Audit is just starting, I've sent all of you an email, they're here today, this is our first day in, so I can most definitely work with her, I know I'm going to be every day working with the auditors, trying to get them out as fast as we can so we're not getting charged as much.
Yeah, and it's the end of June before we actually begin to address that.
Right, but they'll be here for several months.
Oh, great.
But yeah, I will do everything I can do with Jen and payroll to go employee by employee and give you total. Now, I guess question with that being, do you want to know what their max could be?
No.
Because some people do insurance, some people don't, some people do just employees, somebody could get pregnant. I guess that opens up a whole.
It's a figure would be somewhat.
Do we want everybody's? I, I don't know that, I think we just need to know what the benefit package is typically and like the maximum.
I guess we can look at it as what was offered.
Didn't you give that to us at our last personnel committee?
Start of that, yeah.
Right.
Kind of a breakdown on what?
Yeah, but it wasn't.
Wasn't what?
Councilman Barrett, you have nothing. Councilman, Councilperson Western, you have any more? Councilman Augubright?
Yes. I, I want to salute the people that ran for office and that, that includes everybody but gentlemen on our, on our council. First of all, it takes a lot of courage to run for office, you know, and, and it takes a lot of time, it takes a lot of energy, a lot of money to do that and a lot of people don't know what that means, especially when you run all county, not like Warner.
Yeah, like districts, nothing.
But there, but it does and, and my, and my hat, my hat always goes off to everybody that runs and that and, and I just want to salute those people today.
Councilman Warner?
The only other thing, when, when we have the meeting with dispatch, I really, really would like J and K there so we get both sides of the story. I really would, because I, I'm hearing two different things, two different people and I'd really like.
We formally asked for that.
Huh?
We formally asked for it.
Yeah, so I just want to make sure that does happen. That's all I've got.
And along that line, I would encourage any commissioners that are available to be there as well so that there's this process of information.
I'm just thinking, because dispatch is, I don't know if it's all that, everybody's not.
We can do it all that space, yeah.
Janelle said it would be very tight if we all came, but it's doable.
It's not, it's not going to be that tight.
Okay. I just wonder if there's like, if we could go to a conference room or something for conversation so we're not, because they're still working while we're all in there, so.
Yeah.
That's a good point.
Thank you. Councilman Hodges?
Yes, just so I'm clear, have we set an all-day session yet for budget? And if so, what's that date, please?
We're looking at the 29th.
Of June?
Yes.
Okay, and that's what I have on my calendar, but I want to make sure because I know we've changed where we've talked about.
I have to hear back from everybody yet to see if it already was in line and I can pardon you, but are we good with that? I can set it.
I'm good. Pretty sure I already [inaudible].
Thank you, Councilman, anything else?
The only other thing I'd like to say is that I am really excited about getting to stay with this group and stay on council and.
Me too.
And continue the good work that, that we do here. So that's exciting to me and I don't want anybody to ever think that I was tired of this group or ready to move to something else, it was just different opportunities. So I'm ready to dig in and, and really work hard as I have, I think, the last six years, so it's exciting.
Councilman Wheeler?
I do, but not at this time.
All right. And I will stand in there with Thor and tell you for the next eight months, I may make your lives miserable because there are things that needs to be accomplished, but I do appreciate the opportunity that I have had to serve and will, will have my full effort until December 31st. Tiffany?
Just the audit, the last thing I have to bring up. We'll get the emails sent out to, I'm assuming maybe Bailey or somebody today or tomorrow when they want to do their entrance interview and then I'll email that out and see if things can come.
Okay, and that's all of us that can be available or just?
Yeah, any who choose to come, we need at least one commissioner on council to at least be there.
Okay. All right.
Good meeting.
Nothing else, meeting adjourned.
I liked it.
Wow.
Already seen.
Augubright, we want to check, we want to change this.
I don't care, you go on right ahead.